Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. I'd like to call to order the June 14, 2020 regular meeting at 6:00 PM. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance led by Dr. Myrna Morales, Assistant Superintendent Human Resources.
Please stand. It is a pleasure today to say the flag salute on Flag Day, which was adopted in 1916 to commemorate the acceptance of our flag in 1777. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Myrna Morales. Up next, Isela, would you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia.
Here.
Governing Board Member Gomez.
Here.
Governing Board Member Martinez.
Present.
Governing Board Member De Leon.
Present.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta.
Present. The next item of business is the approval of the agenda of the regular meeting, June 14, 2021. May I get a motion?
Board Member Gomez makes the motion to approve the agenda of regular meeting, June 14, 2021.
May I get a second?
Garcia will second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none with the motion by Board Member Gomez and a second by Board Member Garcia. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia.
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez.
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez.
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon.
Yes.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta.
Yes.
The next item of business is the approval of the special meeting minutes, May 3, 2021. May I get a motion?
Motion to approve the special meeting minutes, May 3, 2021.
Thank you. May I get a second?
I'll second.
With any questions or comments? Hearing none. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia.
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez.
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez.
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon.
Yes.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta.
Yes. Motion carries 5-0. The next item of business is the approval of the regular meeting minutes, May 10, 2021. May I get a motion?
Motion to approve regular meeting minutes, May 10, 2021.
Thank you. May I get a second?
Garcia will second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? A hearing none with the motion by Board Member Martinez and a second by Board Member Garcia. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia.
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez.
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez.
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon.
Yes.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta.
Yes. Motion carries 5-0. Next up is employee association reports. We'll start off with top board president, April Connor.
Good evening. Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Board Member President Cuarenta, our school board members. Interim Superintendent Mr. Frutos, Executive Cabinet, and guests. Obviously, this is, I'm nervous because this is the first time I've done this in a long time, and I've obviously forgot how to dress, so this is how I showed up today. But I wanted to reflect a little bit on our school year. I think about the beginning of this year, the technology we had to start the distance learning at a higher level. I always compare ourselves to other districts and look what they're doing, and we were exceptional. We were exceptional. Good choices with technology, good implementation. We've got really great teachers here. And they learned a brand-new delivery system. I mean, that was something that was, that was a huge undertaking, and it is amazing how much our teachers have grown. It's been a tough year, and I have to tell you, I'm really glad that we're moving back to in-person. It's going to be exciting to see the kids. I want to reflect on a couple of things that happened, and of course, my thoughts are with the Bean family, which Jeff Bean did pass away, and his services tomorrow. So it's been, it's been up and down, up and down. Moving forward, which I hope we're all kind of focusing on that next step, we have a big concern about stability, cohesiveness, and collaboration. We want to be partners. We want to also put aside egos and move forward together. This is the only way we're going to be successful, together. And I hope that we can return to a cohesive, collaborative nature as we see each other in place, moving forward to do good things for our kids. Right now, we are working without a contract. We have summer school starting, and of course, in good faith, we have people that are showing up and doing their very best. We really do need to support them. They're out there doing their job in good faith that they're going to get compensated. I've shared this before. I am concerned about we don't have a contract because I have teachers in that 1 to 10 years that are very viable, that are going to be our future leaders here. But because we don't have that stability, that contract, they don't know what their livelihood is going to be next year, they're looking other places. And that worries me because we need to have these great people elbow-to-elbow with us right now. We need good teachers to stay in this district, and we track them by making sure they're secure. And so I hope tonight, when you're in session, we talk about it, and we can move forward quickly to secure our contract, support our teachers, and make sure we keep attracting the most high-quality people to deliver our services for our students. And with that, have a great summer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, top board president, April Connor. Up next, the report for CSEA will be Marianne Giano.
Good evening, board, President Cuarenta, members of the board, interim superintendent Frutos, cabinet, and audience. My name is Marianne Giano. I am the CSEA chapter secretary, and I'm here to speak on behalf of our CSEA members. Let me start with the welcome back. We would like to thank all of our classified employees that have been working at the sites or at home to ensure a successful summer school session. CSEA is actively negotiating with the district on health and welfare, as well as the sixth step, and are hopeful that a suitable agreement can be reached soon. We are looking forward to negotiation sessions being more productive moving forward. At the last board meeting, CSEA felt that the statements in regards to interim superintendent Ruben Frutos were uncharacteristic of what we have witnessed during this pandemic. Mr. Frutos has put the safety of students, staff, and teachers as number-one priority, and CSEA would like to thank Mr. Frutos and the school board on their dedication to the safety of all, even when it's not the popular opinion. We would also like to thank you all for your service and thank you for the time, your CSEA Chapter 447 Executive Board. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item of business is board member reports. We'll start off with Board Member Diane Martinez.
Yes, I was invited by high school teacher.
I'm sorry, Board President Cuarenta, we have public hearing next.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Sorry. Okay, so the next item of business is public hearing. Persons wishing to address the board should fill out a blue card located on the table by the door and submit the card to the secretary. Speakers will be called in sequence during the hearing section, which is limited to each speaker to one presentation of three minutes. The board cannot engage in public discussion during this portion of the agenda. Staff will follow up and address public inquiries if contact information is provided. Those who have a group concern are encouraged to select a spokesperson to address the board. Persons wishing to address the board on a specific agenda at the, at the time the item is under discussion are limited to three minutes each and will be called to speak following their staff comments and prior to the board's discussion and taking action. Isela, do we have any telephonic comments?
We do not have telephonic comments for this board meeting, but we do have in-person comment. And our first speaker is Lillian McCouts.
Yes. Good evening, board, President Cuarenta, board members, interim superintendent Frutos, executive cabinet, and guests. My name is Lillian. I am a teacher in Paramount, and I'm speaking as an individual. This has been the most difficult year I've had ever teaching. I just finished my 19th year teaching in Paramount Unified. I have never had to invest so many more hours over and above my contractual expectations that I have this year. I must say that I have learned so much. I have learned to enhance my students' learning and engagement with the use of technology more than I ever thought I would be able to do. Unfortunately, I can only credit this to my own perseverance. The district did nothing to aid me in my growth, but instead create more stress and an unhealthy working environment. The training the district attempted to provide us the week before school year began was insufficient, untimely, added additional stress, and ultimately left us more confused and overwhelmed. It was as if they gave us a toolbox, gave us no time to learn how to use the tools, and then expected us to build a mansion in two days. This leads me to my current concern. The end of the school year has passed, and we still have no idea what the next school year will look like. While other districts have not only a plan, but have already shared it with staff and community, PUSD appears to have none. Frustratingly, this continues a pattern of not providing staff with any information until the last minute. In fact, as we started summer school today, we still do not know the teacher's summer rate of pay. We are beyond last minute. Teachers are planners. We cannot effectively do our jobs if we are constantly left in the dark about the framework we are asked to work within. Traditionally, we are given only two days before the start of the school year to prep. One of those days is taken up with meetings, leaving us with one day to prepare our classroom and supplies. This is not enough time. I have colleagues that are having to move into new classrooms, they are starting from scratch, and need to put together an entire classroom. We have one day to unpack all stored materials, put up bulletin boards, prep student books, gather and sort materials, create name tags, label student books and materials, organize the classroom furniture, create a grade book, create a communication platform for parents, meet and collaborate with their grade-level team, clean the classroom with dead insects and cobwebs, and plan for the first week of school. This is not, this is just a sample of our prep for the school year. It is not a complete list. The district must be proactive, collaborate with teachers and the community, and come up with a plan now for the upcoming school year. In reality, this should have already occurred. Failure to act immediately and create a plan will only perpetuate.
I'm sorry, Ms. McCouts, your three minutes are. The unhealthy work environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, next up, we have Brenda Olmos.
Hello, fellow Paramount elected officials. We are responding tonight to a comment made during last meeting's board member reports regarding communication between city council members and school board members, or should we say, a perceived lack of communication. First, let us say that the city of Paramount and the Paramount Unified School District have worked together for teams for decades. We have crossed over traditional lines to support each other in groundbreaking ways. Traditionally, cities and school districts have different types of goals, rarely sharing a common purpose. They often, in fact, are rather confrontational. In Paramount, both city and school districts have long known the full cooperation strengths that overall community that we, in fact, serve the same constituents. What began years ago as a dedicated effort to open avenues of communication has grown in collaboration that includes the business sectors, local churches, and residents of all walks of life. We arguably have the closest working relationship of its kind in California, and it has made a real difference. One unique example of cooperation is the Ad Hoc Committee, which was formed in the early 1990s and is made up of two council members, two school board members, the city manager, and the superintendent, and they meet monthly. The sole purpose of this community is to maintain and enhance communication and provide help in any way possible that we can help each other. We can tell you from personal experience that comments, ideas, and conversations are free-flowing and completely open. This tight working relationship has endured through changes in elected officials and staff members. The relationship is as strong today as ever and will only grow more productive in the future. So to suggest anything else is disingenuous. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Board members, that is the last public speaker for tonight, but I did want to add a statement for tonight. At the study session of May 17, we received comments unrelated to the topics being discussed. Although non-related items are not read during study sessions, as a courtesy, we will append those comments to today's board meeting and will be available in the YouTube recording. It is important to note that the comments are a few weeks old, and some, like those from our labor partners, can be dated and might be updated with new comments during tonight's board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Isela. The next item of business is board member reports. We'll start off with Board Member Diane Martinez.
Thank you. I was invited by high school teacher Christine Barbosa to listen to her advanced speech and debate student speeches. I was very impressed with each student as they delivered their speeches. They were excellent public speakers. Thank you, Ms. Barbosa, for the invitation. I also attended the following schools' drive-through this past week, Mark Keppel, pardon me, not Mark Keppel, Harry Wertz, Collins, Alondra, and Lincoln. And it brought joy for me to see the teachers, the families, the children do the drive-throughs. As I looked into our students' eyes, we brought back hope into their lives, and it was so nice. Everyone was happy, the teachers were cheering the children on, so I enjoyed that very much. And I also attended the high school graduation, the Paramount Adult Graduation, and the Brenna Vista graduation. And I was impressed with our graduates and our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Diane Martinez. Up next is Board Member Carmen Gomez.
Thank you, President Cuarenta. Good evening to our Paramount community. Buenas noches a toda nuestra comunidad de Paramount. Since our last meeting, I attended all three high school graduations. Congratulations to the graduating class of 2021. You did it. Nothing stopped you, not even the pandemic. No matter where your journey takes you, your experiences have made you stronger and able to take on whatever challenges you may face in the future. As you continue to grow and achieve many successes, don't forget to always remember your alma mater. Once a pirate, always a pirate. I was a part of the Human Resource Hiring Committee. I participated in the interviews for principal positions. I have been receiving messages that this board only wants to hire outside-district employees. I want everyone to know for the record, this board is unified in finding the most qualified candidates, either within our district or outside of our district. We, the board, have given interim superintendent Mr. Frutos the directive that the Human Resources Hiring Committee include at least two board members on the committee and any issues with human resources. I also attended a district safety committee meeting along with Board Member Garcia. The committee talked about the Safe School Guidelines and the end-of-the-year activities. I would like to request interim superintendent Mr. Frutos to have the minutes of this meeting on the PUSD website. I believe in transparency, and if any member in the committee have any questions, please let us know. I'd like to thank Jesse Flores and his team for a great job at our graduations. I also attended the Environmental Committee along with Vice President De Leon. It was, it was always great to, it was always great to have parents involved in this important committee. We talked about outdoor air quality and monitoring, also indoor air quality and filters. We will continue to have these meetings more frequently. I have also been keeping up with the state and local updates on the opening of re-schools. I also want to thank all of our district employees for all they have done throughout this year. I also want to take a moment to thank Mr. Frutos for his leadership. And this concludes my report, President Cuarenta.
Thank you, Board Member Gomez. Up next is Board Member Linda Garcia.
Good evening, and thank you. It's good to be back in the, in the boardroom and finally starting to move forward. I want to congratulate all of our graduates. They did a wonderful job on such a hard year. They continued to work and make it, get through it, the hard work of their families that had to put up with it and, and help them along the way. I congratulate the parents, too. This past month was a busy month. I attended an ad hoc meeting where they discussed the plans for the city, the school, returning back to school, the STAR program, and how they were going to expand it if they needed to in different schools, which is a great, a great help to our community for the parents that have to work and have to leave their students, their kids after school for a few hours before they return. I attended a Laxton meeting in that time. I attended the graduations, and I, and I will say that the graduation over at the adult ed for the transition students was so heartwarming, and the things that they've learned is amazing, and I just, it just grabs your heart to, to see the wonderful things that they have done. I also attended the city farmer's market. I guess it was last Friday. It's going to be once, the first Friday of every month, and I attended, and my, my grandson won third place in an arcades that they held, the Latina club held, and I was real proud of him for that. And like Ms. Gomez said, I attended the safety meeting, and the drive-by at Lincoln, it just kept on and on and on. It was like never-ending, and it was so good to see the kids there, happy, happy to be moving on to Alondra, and they seemed very excited about moving on to a new school. So I'm, I'm hoping that all of those new sixth, incoming sixth graders do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Linda Garcia. Up next is Vice President Sonia De Leon.
Good evening, students, parents, families, teachers, staff, administrators, and our Paramount community. This challenging school year has come to a close, and I want to thank all our students, parents, families, staff, teachers, and administrators for all your hard work and dedication. It has truly been a challenging year. When the going got tough, you did not jump ship, and I applaud you for that. We did it. Now, on to summer school for those brave students and teachers. Nevertheless, I attended the meeting for the Los Angeles County Schools Trustee Association, and I also attended the Environmental Committee meeting where we talked about advocating for air monitoring from the Southern Coast Air Quality Management District. We also discussed having transparency on the Environmental Committee by adding the minutes on the district's webpage, having 16 filters in all classrooms in all schools, applying for grants, and lastly, we talked about educating regarding environmental injustice for students, parents, and teachers. Lastly, I attended the ad hoc meeting and supported Janice Hahn for her efforts in pushing the state of California to eliminate the use of the cancer-causing chemical hexavillium chromium. I supported her letter to the California Air Resource Board urging them to adopt new regulations that will phase out hexavillium chromium facilities that are, that are operating in our undeserved, underserved communities. We need environmental justice now. Besides attending these meetings, I attended the most important end-of-the-year events, our graduations. Words cannot express how proud I am of all our graduates. I would like to especially recognize our graduating students who attend the Paramount Adult Transition Program. Isela Flores, Elsie Holman, Marcus Long, Leslie Oropeza, Alejandro Perez, Anthony Yáñez, Esperanza Yépez, and Juan Satarán. Congratulations, class of 2021. My hopes are for you to come back to PUSD and proudly serve on our, proudly serve your community as a governing board member. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President De Leon. I want to thank my colleagues for sharing all the great things they've been doing on behalf of the school board. Thank you. I also want to congratulate our 2021 graduates, and I also want to thank my colleagues for unanimously approving the previous resolutions. Those resolutions were put together, you know, by me doing research, putting stuff together, asking for permission from other school board members, so thank you that, I know that we're setting the foundation for a greater Paramount USD. And then up next, so that's it for my report. Up next is the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Board President Cuarenta, board members. Tonight, we're pleased to bring you two reports that I believe will be a foundation as we get ready to close the year. The first one, I'll invite Dr. Renee Jeffries to give an update on the LCAP, and then after that, we will bring you an update on the May revision and budget. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jeffries.
Good evening.
Wait, which?
LCAP. Yes, LCAP.
District Board Financing and Recunding. I got two, what? Did you get three today? No, it's just the, the fund refunding, interesting, that one's not, what's your name? It should be in the LCAP one. All right, if you want a second, I'll follow this.
While we're waiting, can I just say, I wanted to thank our JROTC. I attended the memorial service over at City Hall on Memorial Day, and that was their first big boost over there performing. They did a wonderful job for our city, and they did a wonderful job for our graduation. I'm glad to see them back.
Board President Cuarenta, if it pleases the board, we can switch the presentations and get started. Jim, if it's okay with you with May revision, if it's okay with Dr. Jeffries, and then, while we're presenting the other one, Jim, if you want to work with Renee.
Should be 20, 19, 20, I don't know, actual, is that the one?
No. Mr. Frutos, if you'd like, we can do a screen share of the, we do have the presentation in Word doc, so we can.
That would be fine. Both of them are in Word doc, Jim, if you want to download them from there, so if you want to do this.
We're ready in Word docs.
There you go.
Okay. All right. Good evening, Board President Cuarenta, members of the school board, interim superintendent Mr. Frutos, executive cabinet, and guests. Next slide. This evening, I am doing an overview of the proposed LCAP, and tonight, I'd like to highlight how feedback or input was solicited from our parents, teachers, staff, and students. I'd like to review the new LCAP goals and key actions and services for our new LCAP, and then outline the next steps in the approval process. Next slide. Okay. Usually, I'm used to pressing the button and seeing it, so it's.
Okay. Usually, I'm used to pressing the button and seeing it, so it's okay. It's all good. Okay, so first of all, stakeholder input. As we all know, it's very important to gather as much input as possible from as many stakeholders as possible. This chart outlines the different stakeholder groups as well as the different ways that we gathered input. We have our surveys, which we've done every year, so our annual surveys from staff, students, and parents. We did something new this year. I'm very pleased to talk about the way that we presented, had presentations at each school site. So I developed a PowerPoint for each school site with surveys embedded, and each school site delivered the PowerPoint and gathered input from their own stakeholders. I feel that this was very successful this year. We had a little over 400 people that participated in that, so we had 405 actual participants in this process. It was a little more intimate this way, and it was a little more open-ended than our surveys. So while it was new, I would like to continue with that in the future. We had our ELPAC or DLEC meetings, as well as our PAC meetings, and we have our LCAP committee. Something else new this year is we put together, I put together a recording with a presentation, and I embedded it in, well, I didn't do it, but our technology team put it up on our website with a survey embedded in that. That wasn't as successful this year. We only had a handful of participants. I'm not sure why, so that's something that I'm going to revisit for next year. Do we need to have more outreach, or were our parents feeling satisfied with the way that they were able to provide input this year? I'm not sure, but we will definitely look at that for next year. We had another new opportunity to have student voice, and so I gathered a group of high school students, worked with the ASB from each of our high schools, had 12 students, and we had a focus group, and so we were able to go deeper into the student surveys. And so that was new this year. Just listening to our students was so insightful, and it was really nice to listen to them, and they are not only insightful, but just the way that they express themselves and collaborated was really wonderful. And then we, our annual consultation with Selpa, and then this evening, our public hearing for, at the school board meeting.
I have a question before you go on, Lee. Which sites for your, for your parent presentations at each school site, which site was the most popular and which site was the least popular?
I don't have that in front of me, but that's something I can get back.
Can you get it for the board members on a Wednesday basis? Thank you.
And when you say most popular and least popular, what exactly are you saying? That you want to know which ones had the most participants?
Correct.
Okay.
And on the student focus group, I know you mentioned the high school students, ASB students, are you, are you thinking about including other students, other, other students within the high school, or just the ASB?
Possibly, yes. That was the first time we've done anything like that, so we'll definitely be revisiting to continue to find ways for student voice.
Okay, because I would like to see more inclusiveness. Thank you.
Okay. Next slide. Every three years, we actually have a, we develop a new LCAP. It's a three, it's considered a three-year LCAP, even though we re, we revisit every year, and so this is the beginning of a new three-year cycle. It was supposed to be last year, but we all know what happened. So in this process, we had gathered information, actually two years ago, about our LCAP goals. This is an opportunity to revise our actual goals and the metrics. And so with input from two years ago, we did revise our goals. The first three goals are very similar to what we've had in the past. However, the last goal is brand-new, based on input. The other thing to note about our new LCAP goals is that they are in complete alignment with our strategic plan, which means that everything that we are doing will be in complete alignment. So we have developed a college and career culture, support high-quality teaching and learning with state standards, create positive school climate and environments conducive to learning, and develop parent and community partnerships. Next slide. So what I'm going to do next is go through each goal and go over the proposed actions and services. What you'll notice is that many, most of the actions and services are a continuance of what we already have in place, which makes sense. It may be a three, new three-year LCAP, but you just don't throw everything out and start fresh, okay? There are some brand-new proposed actions and services, and after I go through all of them, I'll highlight those or spotlight those, okay? So the first goal, develop a college and career culture. We have our CTE programs. We have Mesa. Linked Learning is in this goal, as well as Project Lead the Way. Our college counselors and career centers at our high schools are in this goal, as well as AVID. AVID is K through 12th grade now, and we have support for our PSAT and preparation classes. Next slide. I have to get on my tippy toes to see where we are. Continuing in the same goal, we have district-sponsored college field trips. We have our AP classes. Odyssey High School is in this goal, and wow, next year, we'll have a full class. It'll be our first graduating class from Odyssey. That's exciting. We have our summer school program in this goal, as well as GATE, and the planning of theme-based schools. Next slide. The second goal, support high-quality teaching and learning with state standards. We have our lead teachers at school sites that support instruction at each school. Very important as we implement new programs. Next year, we'll be focusing on science at the K-5, and we'll definitely be using those lead teachers at the school sites. We have professional development in all areas. We have our new teacher induction program. That's a two-year program that supports our brand-new teachers. We have our curriculum specialists that develop and support instruction and district-wide assessments, benchmark assessments. We have our TK preschool classes. We have coaching for new administrators. Not only do teachers need support when they're new to the field, but our administrators need support as well, and so there's coaching for new administrators. We have our co-teaching in grades six through 12, and that's the co-teaching model with students with special needs and general education in the same classrooms, benefiting instruction from two educators at the same time. And we have support for our VAPA, our Visual and Performing Arts, across the board, K-12. Next slide. We have our rotation of music and PE teachers at the elementary schools. We have after-school sports for middle schools, our web-based programs that support students, teachers, as well as parents, and boy, was that ever necessary this year. We have our one-to-one devices, our Chromebooks, our core textbooks, as well as library books and library program, school-based interventions for academics as well as behavior. So that's support that each school gets, and then they have a little bit of choice in how they provide that. And then our instructional technology team. So that's all under Goal Two. Next slide. Goal Three, positive school climate and environments conducive to learning. We have our base-level program and staffing and operations. We need clean, safe schools with a solid staff in order to create an environment conducive to learning. Our deans, counselors, behavior specialists, and social workers. We have different curriculum that supports social-emotional learning, professional development and coaching specific to this area. We have programs that support some, social-emotional learning, such as Web, Where Everybody Belongs, and Link Crew at our middle school and high school. We have our case carriers that support foster youth and homeless students, specific supports for those two student groups. Next slide. Our nurses, attendance specialist, and attendance specialist are in this goal, supported in this goal. Saturday school is in this goal, as well as site-based incentives and activities, and technology security and communication systems. That is all under Goal Three. And our final goal, this is our brand-new goal, so we have, we are working on developing this goal. We have parent classes that support college entrance requirements, career opportunities and wellness, parent training on college readiness software, parent information sessions and classes in various areas, as well as parent liaisons. Okay, and next slide. So that, those are the main actions and services in each goal. What I'd like to do is, as I mentioned, most of the LCAP, we are continuing to add to and refine, so most of it is not new, just refinement and increasing services. However, we did, based on input from our stakeholders, we are proposing some new actions, and that's what this slide summarizes. One new action is to begin the planning process for theme-based schools to improve student opportunities. It could be anywhere from STEM, Visual and Performing Arts, possibly some language, dual immersion, things like that. So really looking at that, researching it. Develop a strong, multi-tiered system of supports, otherwise known as MTSS, with district-wide common assessments to address learning loss and increase intentional teaching. And so that's really looking at our first instruction, looking at our, all of our first programs put in place, whether it's behavior or academics, having a strong district-wide assessment. How do we measure student achievement or student success? If students are not responding to the strong first programs, then what needs to go into place so that students will benefit? So differentiating for our students so that they can benefit. New strategies, new, different programs, but having a, having it district-wide also, so it's not every school developing it on their own, okay? We're proposing additional social workers to support social-emotional needs of students at each school. This was interesting because it definitely came through very loud and clear from all of our stakeholder groups, especially our parents. They're really asking for this. We're proposing parent liaisons to connect home and school, school to support education sessions. This also came through loud and clear from, not only because we're developing this new goal, our fourth goal, but parents, it was interesting, and I, one of our parents, I think she just said it so beautifully, when she said, you know, when a parent speaks to a parent about what's happening in school, we listen. And so that parent liaison, having someone who can connect with our parents, so that our parents aren't feeling intimidated or scared or unsure of what's happening. So to create that connection, that, and to make that match, to make, create that bridge, build that bridge, okay? And then increase parent outreach and educational presentations across the board. We have many, but to really go deeper and to go wider for our parents, okay? So those are the proposed new actions in our LCAP, and for the final slide, our timeline, our next steps. This evening, we have our public hearing, and then on, from this evening's public hearing, we'll take the information for our final revisions to the LCAP, and we'll bring it to the board for approval, for your approval on the June 28 meeting. Five days after that, then it will be submitted to LAECO for their approval, and then it starts all over again. We begin implementation, we start measuring, we start meeting, and it starts all over, because this is truly a living, breathing document, which is that continuous cycle for constant improvement. Thank you, board members. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have a question. On slide number 12, when it states, propose additional social workers to support social-emotional needs of students at each school, how many social workers are we looking at per school that we need additional social workers?
It would be one per school.
And what is the timeline on that?
That's a great question. Well, it would be for next year, so it would, I'm assuming, be dependent on when we can hire them, so.
When you, when you refer to next year, are we saying we're going to hire by June 30, 2022?
Oh, you know, I, I will have to get back to you on the timeline, because it would be with HR and that process.
Okay, because we really need to work on it. I mean, one thing is to propose it and say that we're going to work on it, and the other, that we, that next year comes and we're back on this. Nothing against you, Dr. Jeffrey, but I just want to make sure that this is, this is done in a timely fashion.
Thank you.
One other question on slide number nine.
Yes.
Professional development and coaching. Is professional development required for all, for all staff, or is it based on if I want to take professional development classes?
Great question. So it depends. It depends. Is that, do you love that answer? It just depends.
It seems like that's the answer tonight, but it's okay.
Let me explain what I mean, because we offer professional development where it's voluntary. Yes, absolutely. But we also provide professional development that's mandatory. So it depends on that type of professional development. What is it that we're looking at? So at the site level, oftentimes, we have professional development for the entire staff. At the district level, if we're implementing new programs, then it's either it's mandatory. If we're, if it's for implementing a new program, sometimes, it's that we work with, we provide professional development to the teacher leaders, who then go to schools and provide that. So it depends. So there's a variety of both, things that are required, as well as opportunities for teachers to, to sign up and attend on their, not on their own, but with compensation, always with compensation.
So when we're referring to the slide, we're referring to both?
Yes.
And once this is approved, as you mentioned, when is the next LCAP meeting? Because I remember just going to one two years ago, as you mentioned, the big one that we had in the auditorium with parents and staff and, and students who wanted to come. When is that next one? Because I really would like to see more parent participation and student participation, or even, I remember there was an alumni there also, so that's the community that we need alumni to come back and give their input, because this is about the community. I mean, this is where our dollars go, so.
So there are two, there are so many different types of, of meeting. So we have the LCAP Committee meeting, and that is different than what I think that you're talking about. You're talking about the LCAP, the forums, the community forums. That was something that we tried for the first time that year, and we did have two of those. We had one in the fall, and we had one in the spring.
Okay.
It definitely was not as well-attended as we had hoped. Believe me, we planned for the masses. So obviously, this year, we had a very different school year, so we opted to do the site level instead of the large forums. And so that's something that we need to decide. Are we going to continue with the forum and see if we can pull in more people? I definitely want to continue with the site meetings, because that definitely brought in more people.
I, as a board member, would like to see both, because it's very important. So I would like to see, I don't know about my other fellow board members, but I would like to have a directive to, to our interim superintendent, that he oversee that there are more forums being placed. If my other board members would like to speak on that behalf, you know, that'd be great, but as far as myself, I would like to see that happen. Thank you.
Yeah, I definitely agree with Board Member Gomez. The whole LCAP is based for meaningful engagement from parents. So I really like the fact that you are visiting each school site and then getting the input from students. I really appreciate that. I think the community forums should continue, and I think we don't really need to really think outside the box. People will People will come, but it's all in advertisement, right? And I know we had childcare or babysitting, whatever you want to call it. But we didn't say we had a continental breakfast. And I think if you, if you word things to sell, people come. Because I know a lot of people do the, well, before the pandemic, they would do the coffee with the principal. They loved it. And so it's just getting the right wording. It's getting maybe kids to come out and perform, and the parents, you know, take their children and they want to see them. And, you know, you could, we, we don't have to really think outside the box. Like, but people don't understand the LCAP, let alone like teachers. You know, I've found teachers, and there's colleagues of mine too, that were like, "What's LCAP?" Because they're so busy just teaching, and parents are busy being parents and, and working. And so I think, you know, that we should continue, we should continue, and we should advertise it. Maybe we could have some kiddos from the Odyssey, you know, "Hey, how would you advertise like this, this meeting?" And, and they could start thinking like entrepreneurs, business people. So I definitely agree with Board Member Gomez.
Dr. Jeffrey, did you state that develop parent and community partnerships is the new goal?
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate that. I like that. Mr. Frutos, I have a question for you. It states, "Proposed additional social workers", and Ms. Gomez asked Ms. Jeffrey if there would be a social worker at each site. And so that's up in the air, right?
So I wanted to mention two things. Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Regarding the social workers, Ms. Gomez asked a very good question, what is the timeline?
Yes.
If the Board remembers, some of you had questions regarding the abilities necessary for the social workers, the certifications required and all that. So we want to make sure that we hire the right person. Our HR department would do their due diligence, we would get involved. So we want to move quickly, but we want to do it right. You will hear in the next presentation that we're also doing a multi-year approach to our budgeting. So when we come back to the Board, you will see us bring you a variety of priorities. And let's say the Board says, "Social workers with the right certifications are the priority." Those might be funded in year one, but you are about to see us do a multi-year budgeting over four years approximately, where the Board might choose some priorities over others. So that's, that's important for us to remember, the one-time money needs to last us for a while. The second piece that was discussed is the forums. We have no problem doing them. We will advertise them and do them. What I would like to do, however, is after the first forum that we do again, that we come back to the Board, give you information on how we advertised it. And if it continues to be limited, we might just do it once a year if we continue to have a very low attendance. Because what it appears to be happening is that when we go to the sites, as Dr. Jeffrey said, we get that closed TLC and folks show up. So we don't mind doing both, but I just wanted to let you know, we'll come back, give you an idea of how we advertised it, what we did, and if it's successful, fantastic. But if not, we will probably tailor our energies to the local emphasis since it's paying off very well so far.
So the same goes with the parent liaisons as well?
Right.
Yes, okay, thank you. And I also support my colleagues regarding forums.
Maybe we could somehow get a student to do, show us how to do a marketing on it, how he thinks that maybe parents might be interested, or students or the community.
We can look at all our options for marketing.
Right, okay.
One of the alumni that was there last time mentioned that, and Dr. Perez did it after the fact, was to announce it on Twitter. They say Facebook's old, I'm, I'm not a social media person, but Facebook's old and Twitter's in. And so if something else is in, like TikTok, who knows? I mean, we can probably do that on TikTok too, just to get people in. But we need to really look at, as, as Board Member Garcia says, different ways to market.
And that's something that we always, I mean, I'm very passionate about making sure we get the input. And that's why, that's actually why we, you know, we're trying different avenues, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jeffrey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next presentation is on our, what we call our pre-budget report. The May revision, as you know, is what the Governor proposes to the legislature. And although we're in the middle of the conversation, it is very important that we bring you the information as we get ready to approve. So Patricia Tu, our Director of Fiscal Services, will give you a present, will give you a presentation on the May revision and budget. I will join her in a few minutes, and we will answer any questions you have at any time during the presentation or at the end, Board members. Ms. Tu?
Good evening, President, Board President Cuarenta, members of the Board, Executive Cabinet and audience. Today, I am presenting a recap of the 2021, 2022 Governor's May Revision Report. Next slide. So for our state fiscal conditions, the Governor, on a whole, announced good news. Revenues were a lot stronger than anticipated after a year of pandemic. The budget proposes a Proposition 98 Minimum Funding Guarantee of $93.7 billion for 2021 to 2022. And that's an increase of almost $8 billion from what was proposed last year at the January proposed budget, and almost a $22.8 billion increase from the start of the year. The state funding guarantee is still projected to be an estimated 38% of general fund revenues plus local property tax revenue. And basically, what this means is that because revenues, we've received more revenues than anticipated, there's more revenues to be allocated to education funding. Next slide, please. There are some issues that were not included in the May revise or not addressed. The Governor did not, did not include anything on the full payoff of principal apportionment deferrals, which occurs from June 22, 2022 to July 2022. That will remain. And there isn't, there won't be any relief for CalSTRS and CalPERS rate increases, so those will continue as they have in prior years. And there has not been any news of any relief for increased unemployment insurance rate costs, which, which will increase in the next year as well to 1.23%. Our current rate is 0.05%. Next slide, please. So funding for next year is listed in the grid there, split up by grade level, grade span, by different grade spans. The Governor did announce a mega COLA for this coming year at 5.07%. And that's because we didn't receive a COLA last year, so this is his way of making it up to, to education. So now with that, we're funded at over $8,000 per ADA on all of our grade spans. And to that, we can also add our supplemental grant and our concentration grant that's calculated at 20% and 50% per ADA for our unduplicated pupil count. Next slide, please. Cash flows and deferrals. Since revenues look good for the state, the Governor did propose that we pay down the deferrals that were partially scheduled for 2022. So you'll see that he is doing away with the ones that were supposed to be from February to May, but he is keeping the one for June of 2022, next year. So although the deferral for June 22 will still remain, we will be watching our cash carefully next year, in the coming months before June, to make sure that we're okay. He also did not change anything for the cash deferrals that we're experiencing this year. So from this year, February until June, our cash is still being held and will be distributed to us from July to November slowly. Next slide, please. Managing enrollment in ADA. So one of the reports that came out analyzing ADA, student enrollment and ADA in California is that the pandemic impacted learning in many ways, but it did affect the loss of students drastically. Based on state-certified data, the student population declined by more than 160,000 in 2021 alone. Usually, the state experiences a 20,000 to 30,000 loss annually. So the question for LEAs now is, how many of these students, remaining students, will return in 21, 22? The good news for school districts is that we are still, the state is still giving us that Hold Harmless provision from 2021 that provides one year of safe harbor, so we can still use our ADA from the prior year going forward, since we are funded on the hire of our 1920 ADA or 2122 ADA. So the question moving forward is, is once that safe harbor is gone, how will we manage our loss of students and therefore the loss of ADA as well? Next slide, please. And here, just for comparison, is our own district's enrollment in ADA. For 2021, we had 13,761 students enrolled. And you'll see that for P2 ADA, there is an asterisk there because we, the state waived the need to, to take attendance for this year because remote distance learning and participation was more of the focus than attendance. And so you'll see that it is 13,709 for two years, 1920. 13,709 was actually our ADA for 2019, 20. So we're carrying over that for 2021. That's our safe harbor. But moving forward, as we move on, it'll be the hire of, you know, of 2021, 22, or the following year after that. And with that, we'll go to the next slide. And I will pass this on to Mr. Frutos.
Thank you, Ms. Tu. Board members, one of the reasons why we bring this chart to you every year is that shows in a very clear format what it is that the budget does alive and well, as you see it. So if you look at the purple line at the bottom, that's where the Governor expected that our economy would be. So this is where the Board members begin to feel a little bit at ease for the next at least two years. The red line is what the Governor's budget is as he began to see what the actual revenues were. When you look at the green line, that's what the Legislative Analyst Office does. If you remember, the Legislative Analyst Office is an independent office that works with anyone that wants to work with them. Their job is to provide unbiased analysis. And what they presented was a significantly higher revenue base in the budget. That allowed the Governor to modify the initial proposals from the extremely conservative approach that was taken when we thought things were going to be very bad for California, to where we now are, where is a huge increase in revenues for school districts. The final amount is actually what the May revision is. So if you look at the blue, it actually started a little higher for 2021, but the Governor opted to decrease it a little bit as we go into 21, 22. The Legislative, the Legislative Analyst Office is actually a little more aggressive, saying, "We believe we're actually going to make more money." One of the reasons why you see us be careful with the amounts that we're giving you tonight is that there's that gap between the Legislature and the Governor. There's still a difference of interpretation of how much money the state has to give us. Next slide, please. So this chart, although the lettering is fairly small, is exactly that comparison. When you look at the second column, that's the Governor's proposal. So the Governor's proposal includes about $93.7 billion. The Legislature, if you notice, $96 billion. That's where you begin to see a difference. The cost of living increase from the Governor is the mega COLA, 5.07. But if you notice, he's giving lesser COLAs for some of our programs, including a very small 1.7 to remaining categorical programs outside the local control funding formula. Now, if you look to the right, to what the Legislature is doing, they're amending the proposal to provide a full 4.05 to all those programs. So you're beginning to notice, guess one, which one the district would like to see? Obviously, the Legislature on that. The deferrals, if you notice, the Governor, as Ms. Tu said, he kept some of the deferrals. The Legislature is proposing to remove them all. The supplemental payments, which is something that we look, as we begin to look at multi-year payments, both of them agreed because it benefits entities like school districts. And finally, the district, as you know, has a stabilization account. The Governor is saying that there are 4.6 billion, and that assists a variety of multi-year programs. The Legislature is higher at 5.3. So as we look at this, you'll notice that over the next couple of weeks, we're hopeful that they'll reach some agreement. We got a little bit of bad news over the weekend that it looks like it might take longer than anticipated to get agreement between the Legislature and the Governor. And that's why you see us do a lot of presentations today in percentages. That way, no matter what amount happens, you'll see us apply it, and it will work. Next slide, please. So what did the Governor say about the spending proposals? The majority of the spending proposals from the Governor are actually good for our district. A super COLA, what does that mean? Well, that we get over 5% in COLA for next year for a lot of our programs. That is very good. If you remember, last year, we're at 4. So that's an increase. A significant amount of concentration program to add staff to school campuses. So one of the things that one of you Board members asked very well is, "When do we see these people?" Well, it all depends again on how some of this get applied and how they get approved. Another amount for expanding learning time. If you remember, we are considered a high-needs district, and learning loss, learning time are very important to us. However, some of those items need to be negotiated, and our labor partners have to work with us. The one-time funds include the amount to pay down deferrals. On the Governor's perspective, some are left. On the Legislative perspective, they're all gone. Community schools and workforce proposals. One of the elements that you'll see discussed with the Board over the next few weeks is the increasing in workforce and abilities for our classified team, either for paths for teaching or other things that both are proposing. Safety and school reopening, a significant amount of our budget is designed to provide support systems, and safety is crucial, and right in the middle of all those proposals. And finally, as you know, the Governor, for years, has had an interest in TK, in early childhood education, that has continued this time with significant proposals to even revenge our standards for budgeting to allow for universal transitional kindergarten. Next slide, please. So one of the things that's important for us is, what is Paramount doing with the budget? So this is a preview of coming attractions. What we intend to propose to the Board for June 28 is to use our significant amount of one-time money to develop a multi-year approach to budgeting. This is something we haven't done before. We've done multi-year projections for you, but never a multi-year budget. So what we intend to do is to grab our one-time money, picture $96 million, deduct what we've already spent, $30-some million to air conditionings, PPE, et cetera, et cetera, and use the remainder to fund us for as many years as possible in three major categories. The first one is instructional programs and learning and loss reduction. Think our core programs, instruction, how do we support them? How do we use this one-time money to carry us for multiple years, especially as we look at the looming decline in ADA? So this provides a gap coverage, if you will, for the next few years. The second one is support systems and equipment. If you think about it, every year, we buy devices for our students. That never ends. Every new grade that comes in, and every year that exits, we keep buying. That allows us to supplement that and use our reserves and our programs. And again, the idea is to buy us support systems for multiple years. The final one is training, professional development, and compensation. We worded that very carefully because there are programs proposed by the Governor, like the workforce program, that if we get the categoricals the way the Governor is proposing, we'll actually get more money in some categoricals. If we get it the way the Legislature is proposing it, we might get a little less, and it is different. So in case, in some cases, it might be direct training for classified employees. In the other case, it might be broader professional development that can benefit everyone in the district, but the amounts could be different. And finally, compensation. We believe that in some cases, our district needs to supplement our compensatory system so that our employees can get paid. And the fact that we got this gigantic influx of one-time money can assist us over multiple years. So in a way, what are we doing? We know we're going to have less money in the future. How do we know that? We have less students. And we know we got an enormous amount of one-time money this year. So our goal is to use that one-time money very prudently. So our goal is to use that one-time money very prudently and allow us for the next three or four years to patch and help us. Now, why are we happy about the budget? Well, there's one more component. The district has been fairly conservative, and we have had a strong reserve. The governor is now saying that he might reduce the allowance of reserves. That provides an additional component to help us over the next couple of years. So if you notice, even though we put 2021, 21, 22, 22, 23, and 23, 24, we have a little arrow to the right that's just a hopeful arrow. We don't know that we'll have enough money to keep patching us for the subsequent year, but if we continue being mindful, if we use our reserves carefully and pay for the programs that we need, our reserves and our one-time money may allow us to help us even further. Next slide, please. And by the way, this uses 100% of our one-time funds. The idea is to use those percentages, I think I put it in red at the lower left, to make sure that you know that the idea is to use those dollars for multiple years. Final thoughts. With the state and revenues, with the federal and state revenues coming a lot higher than anticipating at about $121 billion for K-12, we show a significant improvement from the reductions that we were envisioning last year pre-pandemic. If you remember, we were looking at having an impact on enrollment immediately. Now it looks like it might come a little bit later, which allow us to protect our program. We're very hard to keep those programs and applications that are useful and manage our systems well so that we can continue to provide the best programs for years to come. The second, we should remain cautious as we navigate programs that, that come with audits. Remember, a lot of what the governor did this time is technically bring back the idea of categoricals. He's saying, "I'm going to give you money, but it's for this purpose." So we believe some of those will be audited, so the fiscal team will continue to be very careful to use the money for the intended purpose and make sure that we don't get into an audit challenge. And finally, we will develop fiscal resilience by developing a multi-year approach, which again, we haven't done before, and to be mindful of our declining enrollment so that once we use the one-time money, we will develop our system in such a way that it can keep on going with the reduced ADA funding that we will have over the next few years. And I believe that's the last slide. If there are any questions, we're happy to entertain them at this time.
I don't have any questions, but I do have comments thinking of parents, teachers. When we're looking at declining enrollment, we want to be ahead of the game. We don't want to get to the point where there, there are no students, and then we're like, "There is no board, there is nothing." Without students, we don't, we don't have a purpose. So, and this is something that Board Member Gomez and I have mentioned, that we need to, you know, and we talked, I believe, I know Board Member Martinez wasn't on board yet with us, but we did talk about, kind of like, you know, letting other communities know that we're here and what we offer. And I know Dr. Jeffrey mentioned about themes and having the dual immersion. In our community, most parents leave to other districts because they have those programs. So we want to, like our vision and mission statement says, that we look at other districts. Let's look at other districts and see what they're doing, because I know I get a lot of advertisement, and I'm not going to advertise them here, and I'm going like, "Oh, my gosh, throw that away." And so we want to be ahead of the game with, you know, how we promote more students. And I know that there are less students because there's, a lot of people have exited California. It's getting too expensive to live. So we have to, like, try to be creative in how we get students to come to, to Paramount.
But the flyer, excuse me, but the flyers that we have received in the mail and stuff from the other schools, we actually have those flyers going out from our schools to other communities to get them interested in, you know, programs that we have here.
Okay, it would be nice to see those flyers.
I'd like to piggyback on what Vice President De Leon has to say because I put my granddaughter into soccer at the park, and there's this one parent, she's actually from Bellflower, takes her daughter to Downey for the dual immersion. So I thought that was kind of interesting. And I've also received, when we had this retreat regarding marketing to get more students into our, the following month, I received nice brochures, and I was even in shock from, from, from the United of Compton, which is right next door. And I'm like, "I haven't seen really much about our district." So we really need, in that retreat, we talked about, we need to market our school district. I, just like Board Member De Leon, I would love to see the, the marketing materials and have our input also on the marketing materials. Or, or as you mentioned, Board Member Garcia, what can the high school students do for us? I mean, what, what is their vision in promoting? Because all students have very good ideas, too. I mean, we have to get everybody's.
And so I believe on our, on our flyer, we had the, the, the things that we were trying to bring other students, the reasons to bring them into our district, that there must be a copy. Is there a copy of that?
Yeah. We, we can bring to the board what we have and also the ideas for enhanced marketing, as we had discussed during the retreat. You all have very good points. One, we'll share what we have, and also what are the ideas for increasing marketing as, as the years progress? Because you're right, two, three years from now, we have to have an incredibly strong marketing program to attract as much as possible, even more importantly, not to lose what we have. So I agree with all the board members.
Teachers are free. They're, they market us. And so I, I know that this is something that I've been fighting for, and we have teachers that come and work for us, and they're temporary. And temporary by law is one year. Yet they're working three years temporary. And so I had told myself, I, as a teacher, wouldn't want to be in a district not knowing if, you know, that, I would, I don't know if I could buy a car, because I don't know if I'll have a job the next day or the next year. I wouldn't be able to purchase a house. So it would be like mentally, emotionally draining. And, and so I don't want that for our teachers. I want our teachers to say, "You know what? I'm happy," and then they're, they promote. This is what we do at our school. And they'll, that, that could bring more, more students. And then we also, you also mentioned paying for programs that we need. And I think that's something that, you know, Board Member Gomez and I have been mentioning, like, we need data, you know? Because if we're looking at ADA and it's, it's falling, and it, at one point, like, I, I would prefer a person versus a program. But we want to know, where can we cut? And, and we don't want to be at the last minute going like, "Oh, my gosh, what do we cut?" And then we cut maybe the best program, and there was another program that. So again, we need to be a district that is driven by data and being ahead of the curve because, you know, I am an education specialist, and this year has been so hard. And I know Dr. Jeffrey said, "Hey, we need professional development days," and the teachers are beyond tired. I know I am. And so, yes, we, you know, I, I tell Board Member Gomez, I go, "I'm not kidding you, from 12 to 16 hours a day to make it." I go, "And that's draining because everything had to be from a book to now online." And so the teachers are overwhelmed. We need, you know, to get our attorney to move forward. And we should have already had a plan in place of, or MOU with, with, what they're going to get paid. And so we want to be ahead of the game. I know in the LACSTA meeting, they talked about, the superintendent from Hawthorne gave a great presentation, and they had everything already set. And so I want us to be ahead of the game because, you know, teachers, we like to know ahead. We, we want to plan ahead. That's, it's in our nature. So if we could do that, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. De Leon. And one reminder for the board, one of the things that we're going to be doing tonight is exactly that. We're going to be discussing parameters so that hopefully we can finalize that process as we had discussed before. Make sure that we remember our homework. We are going to come back to you with information regarding a couple of the items that the board mentioned tonight. We'll try to do that by the Wednesday report. And also, we'll provide you information about, as I had mentioned before, in the middle of the summer and the fall, we will be looking at how our data will drive the things that will continue with the district as the board has requested before. Are there any other questions or comments regarding our, our May revision? If you remember, tonight, we have two processes, LCAP and May revision. Both of them will heavily impact what we bring you on the budget next time.
Thank you, Mr. Frutos.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on. The next item of business is board meeting calendar. Mr. Frutos, do we have any changes to our regular meeting or special meeting calendar? Okay, thank you. The next item of business is the approval of consent items. These items are considered routine and may be enacted by a single motion. May I get a motion?
Board Member Gomez makes the motion to approve consent item 7.2 to 7.10.
Thank you. May I get a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to pull an item out.
Which item?
It's on 7.8, Contract Services Report. And let me give you the page. It's page five. It's the EO number 22-00358, speech dot, speechcom dot, or speechcom inc.
So by pulling the item, does that mean we wouldn't contract that services, right? From that?
One, one option that the board has, and I'm going to look at Ms. Preciado in case I miss it, is that the board can take action on the rest of the items, and then we can bring that item individually to address it or not address it tonight, board members.
I'll second the motion. To pull the item.
Okay, so we have a motion by Gomez and a second by Martinez, including the new amendment, right?
No, it was motion by De Leon and second by Gomez.
No, I've been taking notes. Yeah, I've been taking notes. Okay, so we're going to make the amendment then, Mr. Frutos?
Yes, so you're taking action on all the other items and leaving that one separately so that we can address it individually.
Got it. Thank you.
But, but I also have questions on other items on 7.8. But yes, we can go ahead and take that motion, I guess.
Got it. Okay, go ahead. Let's go ahead.
Do we need to take a motion before, for the other one, for speechcom? Or can I just ask my other questions regarding the others?
No, you could ask your question.
Okay. 7.8, NERPOD Incorporated and also NWEA. They're on the same, I don't have the pager, but they're on the same, right there. I have a question on, on these items. They are big items. NERPOD is $88,597, and NWEA is $278,250. I, I was under the impression that we're supposed to go over, before approving any other programs, that we would go over data to see if these programs have worked, and if not, I mean, how, how well they're doing, how successful they're doing. I have not seen any data, and I don't know what we consider successful. And there's no data on, on serving the students, serving the teachers, how well it, how well it, it, it is. I see that for NERPOD. It, we, it doesn't start till November 10, 2021. And NWEA, I believe, we were supposed to, we approved it, I guess, last, a couple of months ago or something, but because it, it has explanation on there. But to me, these are, these are programs that we really, if we're talking about the budget, as we just finished hearing interim superintendent Mr. Frutos talk about it, we really need to look at data on our programs. And I'm one that likes data. I'm one that will ask also the teachers, but I don't see anything on here. So I don't know how my fellow board members feel about that, but I really feel that we need data on these, on these programs to ensure that we're using what is the academic impact on these programs. Were they successful? And if so, how were they successful? So that's where my questions.
Board Member Gomez, are you talking about the, okay, NERPOD?
NERPOD and the NWEA.
Okay. Now, if this is a, let me see.
And board members, if, after you've taken a look.
This is the software that you're asking, that you're questioning.
That's correct.
Now, how could, Mr. Frutos, Mr., well, Dr. Smith is not present.
Right.
Is he?
No, and we can.
How we can measure, how can we measure our software?
We, we, I believe we can address it. I think Board Member Gomez and, and the rest of the board have been correct in asking for data that shows the success and viability of continuing applications. These two applications are coming for renewal. And right now, as the teams come back, one of our goals is to meet in the summer to look at how we can present data to the board in a manner that is clear to understand and that shows the progression of our programs. You all remember that this last Wednesday, we provided a quick update on one of the programs that we have. But as the board members responded, we probably can do more work to provide more details. So my recommendation on these two programs, because of the way the contracts are secured, it allows us to continue the programs since they're implemented and appear to be working, allows us in the summer to get together with our teams to bring you information. And if the programs are not successful, it allows us next year, even though they're multi-year agreements, to just not fund these programs and terminate them. So what we're doing right now is renewing a program that has been working either as a pilot or not as a pilot. It provides our teams, that by the way, just came back today, to get together and develop systems to provide the board information. And we can come back to you either midsummer or the fall and say, not just these two, but a variety of others that have, we've been providing information to say, "Okay, now we have it," and do a, a little bit of a back and forth to say, "Does this information provide what all of you have been asking, which is data that measures the viability of an application and the success rate of that program?" So I would recommend that we do that, if it's okay with the board.
Yes.
We do not have the obligation on a multi-year agreement that's not working to keep it just because we agree. Every year, as you know, we finish the year, and we have the ability to say, regardless of our allowance from the board to have a multi-year agreement, it's not working. So in a way, there's a level of protection every June for us to say, "It didn't work." So that's why I'm recommending that we bring you back information and that you then tell us, "Okay, this is what we wanted to see, it's good or not." But what I don't want to do is terminate something that just started midway because right now, to get started again would be difficult. And quite frankly, the teams are just getting situated again.
And I know my colleagues have stated in previous board meetings that they want to see data. They want to see if this program is beneficial to our students and just not approve a program. And I agree with you, Miss Gomez, I want to see if it's beneficial for our students.
Absolutely.
So I would, I would, I would agree, that's, that's perfect, Mr. Frutos, that we look at this program, say, at the, say, in January. That way, it gives us this, the fall semester, I call it fall semester, but the beginning of the school year, to see how well. We really need to look at the program. So even if we looked at, say, in January, because then we have August through, through December, look at it in January, and then look at it again from January to June to see if, if, if we're, if we're climbing, if we're making a progress, or is it from what happened, if we don't make the progress, what went wrong with the program?
And you're being generous, board members. I was actually just asking for the fall, but thank you, we'll take that. Buys us a little more time. But it is appreciated. And by the way, you've been asking for this. So these are not the only two applications. We will be discussing doing that with a variety of some of the other approvals that we have had.
If I may give more information to Board Member Gomez during our board meeting, our preview of the agenda, Mr. Frutos did tell Board Vice President De Leon and I that that was his plan. But just to give some more background to my colleagues.
Thank you.
And also, if we could get, like, brainstorm as far as what, what kind of data are we looking at? Right? We want to be able, and this is coming, not only, you know, as an education specialist, I'm used to collecting data, but it also comes from the California School Boards Association, which tells us 65% of our time should be spent looking at data. And so we want to be able to say, you know, Khan Academy is wonderful because we have seen these students with D grades now move into Cs or what have you. But we have to be able to go, okay, what is our end goal? What kind of data are we going to collect? That shows, yes, this is a great resource. For example, NERPOD, you could have assessments, you know, informative assessments and does that help? And also, you know, there were comments said today about teachers getting so many tools. And I totally get that. And it's frustrating when you have a plethora of tools. But I think if, you know, we could all agree to say, you know what? It's better to say, here's all the tools. Don't worry that you have all of them. Let's get you one tool out of that toolbox and really make you a professional where you could teach your colleagues. And because then there'll be a better buy-in, right? Colleagues, when they share with NERPOD, you could share within school base. I don't know if you could share within district base. And there's lessons there, so then they could just pull and get the lessons. And then you don't have to reinvent the wheel, and then the other teachers could add to it. But, you know, always going like, hey, let's, don't overwhelm yourself. We're here to support you. So yes, definitely data. We need to be data-driven.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
And if the board takes action on consent, just a reminder to go back to the individual item.
Got it. So with a motion by Board Member Gomez and a second by Board Member Martinez, without further questions or comments, right? With, including that amendment requested by Board Member De Leon. Any other questions or comments? No? Okay. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
And Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next item of business is action items. I will read them one by one. The first act.
Ms. Cuarenta, we need to go back to that individual item that was pulled? As to whether to address it, answer questions, or whatever the.
Sorry. We will go ahead, go back to that item?
So it was item 7.8, page five.
Sorry, guys, I haven't taken the governance class at CSBA.
And then it's the very last item, which is the Speech Com Inc. And we already have under 7.8. On page five, of course, we have we have this proposal of getting this non-public agency for, to get four speech pathologists and one nurse. And we already have, under other fundings, general fundings, we already have the same thing pretty much happening. So I'm proposing that instead of going and getting non-public agencies or SLPs in, that are non-public, that we hire our own SLPs or speech language pathologists. And there are many reasons why. And some people might argue, well, it's cheaper to hire agency because then we don't have to pay the benefits. And everyone knows that benefits cost a lot of money. But I would say that the overall benefit doesn't have a price, and that is to put our students first. Students who have autism really benefit from having a SLP that is consistent, that doesn't change. And we know with these agencies, it changes from time to time. The way they deliver services, their different beliefs. And I could, I have spoken to teachers and they see that within the IEPs, there's inconsistencies. And so in order, and again, we're here, and our main reason is always students. And to put students first would be to really hire someone, or at least the four speech pathologists that we're asking here, to be district-based. Not only does that help our students to have someone that's consistent, someone that is going to be more invested in this learning community. They will, they'll know that they're here to stay. It's not someone that are like, oh, I don't know if I'm going to be here next year, or they're going to move me, or maybe I'm getting tired of this agency. So that's why I feel that instead of outsourcing and making it a paramount corporation, that we really invest in our students and just hire the four speech pathologists.
I'd like to piggyback on what Vice President De Leon has to say. I would like to know, what have we done to recruit district SLPs? I noticed in the past, under the description, it always states, "It is difficult to find qualified employees with this expertise." That was last year. And now this year, I noticed that now it states, "District continues to recruit and hire qualified employees to provide services." Why in 2020, Elga Garcia, Dr. Garcia, was able to hire five SLPs? What did she do that she was able to hire those five? So I understand that there's one that we've, that we've, that we advertised for. But if we were to hire one a year, we would have probably already, we would have probably already built our department. We need to look at other districts such as Linwood to see how they built their speech department. Having agencies come in, these scholars, students need consistency in programming across years. Each new SLP might focus on one area and another may be concentrating on another goal. So the schools that have SLPs in the past five years, how many new agencies, SLPs have served that school? For example, Los Sorritos, moderate to severe students. I'd like to have those answers for our board on a Wednesday report because we do really need to see this, because I noticed that speech.com has a majority, I mean, it's a bigger chunk money-wise and employee-wise, when I believe there's three or four agencies. That why aren't we spreading it across evenly? It seems like speech.com has dominated our school district. And so how many actual district SLP positions do we have? And how many do we need to build our own department?
But didn't we go over this, I don't know if it was last year, something that they all go through an agency and that we couldn't get them?
I believe the reason, I believe they go through an agency because the fact that we, that the district doesn't, it's as Vice President De Leon says, it's mentioned that it's cheaper to get an agency than pay benefits. But if we really think about it, we need to look at the consistency of those students. Those students really need the consistency. And if we're getting pure agencies every year, the agency might bring in somebody new or down the line, a couple of months, one goes somewhere else. So we really, this issue has been an issue for the last three years, and we really need to build our own. Because if other school districts have, why can't we?
If I may, board members, I appreciate the fact that you separated the item. It gives us clarity. I had the opportunity to talk with Mrs. De Leon and Board President Cuarenta as we were reviewing the agenda. And one of the things that I wanted to mention is if it pleases the board, we can table this item. It allows us to bring it back at the next board meeting with an explanation as to how we hire, what we can do, et cetera, et cetera. And it still would allow us time to enable the contract for July 1, if there was a valid reason for us to tell you, we need their services. So if it allows for us some time, I'd like to table the item, bring it back at the next meeting, and then we can provide you the information. And we can also give you the information as to how we can improve our hiring practices, if that's something that we need to do. Or if it's truly very, very difficult to do something, it allows us to give you objective information as to what our processes have been. So if it pleases the board, we can table this item. We will agendize it for next time, and we will either bring you information to say, this is what we can do internally, or if we find that there's a rationale that we can give you again, we're happy to do it, if that's okay with the board members.
That's fine, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much, board. Ms. Cuarenta and Ms. Preciado will table the item until our next board meeting.
And if those questions could be answered on a Wednesday report for the.
Absolutely. We'll make sure how many serve. And as a matter of fact, today it was asked, and I think we're almost done reviewing it. We'll send it to the board by tomorrow.
Thank you.
Is that okay, Board Member Garcia? Does that sound like that'll work for you?
That's fine.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you very much, board members.
Okay, thank you. So now we will move on with the agenda. Sorry about that. The next first item of business is 8.1 American University of Medical Technology, the phlebotomy school. May I get a motion?
Board Member Gomez makes the motion to approve American University for Medical Technology and the phlebotomy school.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none with the motion by Gomez and a second by De Leon. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. The next item of business is 8.2 Spotlight Illuminating Education. May I get a motion?
Motion to approve 8.2.
May I get a second?
Garcia will second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none with the motion by Martinez and a second by Garcia. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. The next item of business is 8.3 waiver of physical education requirement for graduation. May I get a motion?
Motion to approve 8.3.
Thank you. May I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? No, hearing none with the motion by Board Member Martinez and a second by Vice President De Leon. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
And Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. The next item of business is 8.4 Carl D. Perkins Grant Application for Paramount Adult School. May I get a motion?
Motion to approve 8.4.
Thank you. May I get a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none with the motion by Martinez and a second by Vice President De Leon. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
And Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. The next item of business is 8.5 Claudia Care's Consulting. May I get a motion?
Board Member Gomez makes the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Garcia will second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Hearing none with the motion by Gomez and a second by Garcia. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
And Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Next item of business is 8.6 School Study slash Incentive Trips. May I get a motion?
Board Member Gomez makes the motion.
May I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. With the motion by Gomez and a second by Martinez. Do I have any questions or comments? Hearing none with the motion, sorry. Hearing none with the motion by Gomez and a second by Martinez. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
And Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Next item of business, 8.7 Grand Canyon University. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve 8.7.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I have a, I have a question. I know that we have capturing kids' heart. So with restorative practices, are we, is that like also being conducted? And then are we going to do both at the same time? Or are we going to move to restorative practices? Or that would be my question. Then my second question, after these individuals go for the training, can our staff then provide PDs or professional development trainings to other staff members?
Thank you, Board Member Ms. De Leon. I'm going to ask Dr. San Miguel and any other director that wants to help us with restorative practices. And I see Dr. Francois joining. Thank you both.
We brought our computers because we're hype-challenged. We can't see the, we can't see the screen. So with that said, we believe that both programs, both capturing kids' hearts and restorative practices, can be used together because basically those programs are about, especially this part of restorative practices, those programs are about creating relationships with students. And we felt that this was extremely important with students coming back to our campuses in the fall. So we felt that making those connections and making sure that our staffs were trained to make those connections was imperative for our students coming back, especially their social, emotional, you know, well-being. So that was one of the questions. The other one was about the training. We do have trainer of trainers in restorative practices. So we do have a few of those in our district that do provide that type of training for our various staffs.
Just one thing we wanted to add is we're looking for an alternate date so not to interfere with the capturing kid hearts for a couple of sites. And the focus of our restorative circle, restorative practice training for this one, will center a lot on welcoming circles. And so the whole idea of counselors being trained and then come back into the staffs, and they can model and teach our teachers how to do this. So as our students come back to in-person instruction in the fall, we have another set of relationship building tools our teachers have in connecting with their students.
Which is the community circles.
Yes, I think teachers would really like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Any other questions or comments? Hearing none with the motion by Martinez and a second by Vice President De Leon. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
And Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. The next item of business is 8.8 Approval of Instructional Material for Grade Seven. May I get a motion?
Motion to approve 8.8.
Thank you. And then I will go ahead and second. Any questions or comments?
Yes, Board President Cuarenta, I do have a question on this. We received on the Wednesday report, and I did speak to interim superintendent Mr. Frutos, but I would like him to repeat. We received data, but the data, I couldn't understand it. And not because I can understand it, doesn't mean you can't understand it. But I would like, you know, this data in a pie chart or some other way, because when I read it, it didn't make sense to me. So of these, of these percentage that we were given on the Wednesday report, I'd like to see how many students we are talking about. If we say met, the pre-assessment is 2%, the post-assessment is 30%, there's a change of 28%. Nearly met is 11%, post-assessment is 25%, the change is plus 14. But then the not met, it says pre-assessment 86%, post-assessment is 45%, and the change is a negative 41%. So I really don't, based on this, my original question after I saw this was, I would like to hear from teachers as to how successful this open up resource program was and what made this, what made this program successful. As I mentioned, we're looking at different programs, and we need to really look at the different programs to see which one is, is working, which one is not, which one's better, which one's not. But also, if we can get the. one's not, but also if we can get the data in a different form.
And if I can address that, Board President Cuarenta and Ms. Gomez, I actually had a conversation with Ms. Gomez regarding the data, and we will provide the information in a different format. The progression shows a negative that in reality was meant to be a positive. It is an improvement from the assessment, pre-assessment to post-assessment. So we will provide a different way of looking at the data on the Wednesday report. And additionally, we would bring the information of how many students were a part of the grid that was present. So we're happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none with the motion by Board Member Martinez and a second by Cuarenta. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. The next item of business is 8.9, New Course, Language Art Six Intensive. May I get a motion?
Board Member Gomez makes the motion.
May I get a second?
Garcia will second.
Garcia was the first voice I heard, so... Any questions or comments? Hearing none with the motion by Gomez and a second by Garcia. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. The next item of business is 8.10, Achievement via Individual Determination, Multi-Year Agreement. May I get a motion?
Board Member Gomez makes the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none with the motion by Gomez and a second by Board Member Martinez. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. The next item of business is 8.11, Odyssey STEM Academy, Title I School-wide Programs. May I get a motion?
Board Member Garcia?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none with the motion by Garcia and a second by Martinez. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. The next item of business is 8.12, Public Hearing Local Control Accountability Plan 2021 through 22. May I get a motion?
Board Member Gomez makes the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none with the motion by Board Member Gomez and a second by Board Member Martinez. Isela, will you call roll, please?
I just wanted to make motion, I mean, mention that we did not... We don't have any public comments for this open hearing.
Got it. Thank you. So no public comments at the...
Hearing none, I have to close the hearing.
Okay. May I get a second?
Gomez seconds.
And then, sorry, not Martinez, Garcia. And then Gomez. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Next item of business is 8.13, Language and Literacy Group. May I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
May I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none with the motion by Board Member Martinez and a second by Vice President De Leon. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. The next item of business is 8.14, Notice of Completion. May I get a motion?
Motion to approve 8.14.
May I get a second?
Garcia will second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none with the motion by Board Member Martinez and a second by Board Member Garcia. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Next item of business is 8.15, Resolution 20-43, 2012, School Facility Bridge Funding Program Certificates, Adjustable Rate Conversion to a Fixed Interest Rate. May I get a motion?
Motion to approve 8.15.
May I get a second? I will second. Any questions or comments on this item?
I would like to thank the board for allowing us to do that. What the board is doing is beneficial to the district for the next 21 years. The district created some financing that date back to 2001, in 2012. Rates went all over from 4% to 6% higher. Friday night, it got set at 2.95 fixed. So for the next 21 years, you will be paying a lot less on all the financing, and it will save the districts money. So I would like to thank the board, that was a very financial move, and we no longer have fluctuating interest rates fixed now. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frutos.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with the motion by Martinez and a second by Cuarenta. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. The next item of business is 8.16, Elite Modular Leasing and Sales Inc. May I get a motion?
Garcia will motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none with the motion by Board Member Garcia and a second by Board Member Martinez. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. The next item of business is 8.17, Authorization to Bid for Paper and Bread Products. May I get a motion?
Motion to approve 8.17.
May I get a second?
Garcia will second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this item?
Yes, I do, Board President Cuarenta. Just to clarify, is this item on the agenda only for approval or seeking bids? If so, this item will be coming back to the board for final approval with the bids?
Thank you very much, Ms. Gomez. Yes, this item, it allows us to move forward with the process to secure pricing for a variety of bread and food wrapping paper products for nutrition services. Once the item is finalized, it will come back to the board, and our expectation is that, like always, we'll benefit from economies of scale and be able to get good pricing. So we will come back to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none with the motion by Martinez and a second by Board Member Garcia. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. The next item of business is 8.1, the 2020-2021 Budget Adjustments as of May 31, 2021. May I get a motion?
Motion to approve 8.18.
Thank you. May I get a second?
Garcia will second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none with the motion by Board Member Martinez and a second by Board Member Garcia. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. The next item of business is 8.19, Resolution 20-51, the Education Protection Account. May I get a motion?
Board Member Gomez makes the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none with the motion by Board Member Gomez and a second by Board Member Martinez. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Thank you, Isela, yes. Motion carries five zero. The next item of business is 8.20, Resolution 20-52, Assignment of Delinquent Tax Receivables. May I get a motion?
Board Member Gomez makes the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none with the motion by Gomez and a second by Martinez. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. The next item of business is 8.21, Year-end Appropriation Transfers. May I get a motion?
Motion to approve 8.21.
Board Member Gomez seconds.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none with the motion by Board Member Martinez and a second by Board Member Gomez. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. The next item of business is 8.22, Public Hearing, 2021, 2022, Tentative Budget. May I get a motion?
A motion to open the hearing.
Second.
So it was a motion to open it, right? Is that what you said?
Yes.
And then Martinez said second?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any public comment?
I do not have any requests to provide public comment on this item.
Okay. Thank you. Now I need a motion to close.
Hearing none.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? Okay. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. The next item of business is 8.23, Upgrade and Retrofitting of Heat Ventilation and Air Conditioning HVAC Systems. May I get a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Thank you, ladies. Any questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Yes.
So while most members of our board support installation of MRF-16 in all POSD schools and offices for absolute equity in protecting the health of our students and staff from airborne pollutants, we as a board must ensure that Measure I and district funds are carefully managed. This will require the competitive bidding for the retrofitting process is well-publicized to ensure our district is practicing fiscal prudence. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none with the motion by Board Member Vice President De Leon and a second by Board Member Martinez. Isela, will you call roll, please?
Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez? Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Yes, motion carries five zero. The next items are conference item. And, um, I will go ahead and read the first one. It's nine point one, Proposed Revised Board Policy, Forty-one, one-nine dot eleven, forty-two, one-nine dot eleven, forty-three, one-nine dot eleven, Sexual Harassment. Mr. Frutos?
This policy is submitted for first reading from the board, and it includes the three elements listed by Board President Cuarenta. Uh, the current policy is being revised in order to update to more inclusive policies following the information regarding our Title IX Coordinator, and it's included with the changes indicated. And again, this is first reading, Board Members.
Thank you, Mr. Frutos. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments?
No questions.
No? Excellent. Um, the next item of business is information items, ten point one, Updated Master Plan for English Learners. Mr. Frutos?
We have a, uh, master plan that, uh, is compliant with the state and federal law, and I'm going to ask Dr. Jeffries to see if there's any information that, uh, she can provide.
Dr. Jeffries, please.
Sure, the Master Plan for English Learners is, um, it's a very large document. It's huge. But it includes everything from the programs that we offer our English learners or provide our English learners to, um, reclassification criteria, to, um, information about our ELAC and our DILAC, and those requirements. You name it, if it pertains to English learners, it's in there. A few years, a couple of years ago, uh, legislation changed, so we are now under Every Student Succeeds Act, and so a lot of it changed. And then, as we were revising it, up and comes, uh, LPAC instead of CELT. So we had to continue to revise. And so that's why we had to do a full revamping. There have just been so many changes in legislation and requirements. Um, so that's why we are bringing it forward to the board, because there's been a lot of change over the last few years. And, um, every time that we do, um, propose different, uh, something different, like, for example, in reclassification, we always do bring it to the board for approval. Uh, whereas most of the other information in the master plan is, um, for our staff to follow, make sure our staff is following, uh, procedural guidelines from the state or the federal government. But everything's in there, from how we monitor our students to what we do for long-term English learners, every, all of those procedures. And then we will be, um, just taking a look at it every year, and then, um, making sure that it's up to date.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Members.
Thank you. Okay, the next item of business is announcements. Uh, our next regular meeting will take place Monday, June twenty-eighth, twenty-two thousand twenty-one, at six P M.
I'd like to have a comment, uh, for President Cuarenta. I'd just like, I'd like to thank and appreciate the staff that puts these together, our agendas, our, um, PowerPoints, all the materials that are sent to us, because I just want to let you know that it is valuable, that we do read it. Um, at least, I can say I look every page, and Mr. Frutos knows that I always, you know, asking him questions about it. So your work is valuable, so I wanted to thank you.
Thank you, that's a great comment, yeah.
If you glance to your front, you can see the team right there.
Okay. So the next information item is eleven point two, Employee Comment per Government Code, five-four-five-nine, um, five-four-nine-five-seven. Mr. Frutos, do we have any, um, employee, staff employee comments?
Not that I know of. We receive none for tonight, for President Cuarenta.
Thank you. So in closed session, we will discuss the following items. Twelve point one, Conference with Labor Negotiator per Government Code, five-four-nine-five-seven point six. Twelve point two, Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation per Government Code, five-four-nine-five-six point nine B. And twelve point three, Public Employee Appointment per Government Code, Section five-four-nine-five-seven. Uh, twelve point four, Public Employee Discipline slash, forward slash dismissal, forward slash release per Government Code, Section five-four-nine-five-seven point six. We will be going into closed session at eight-twelve P M.
And Board Members, in order to maintain our safety practices for today, please remain in this room. We'll, we'll take a five-minute break to, to, uh, just make sure that we're ready. And, uh, the rest of our colleagues will be dismissed, except for Executive Cabinet. So I, that's okay with the board. We'll need a few minutes just to retool ourselves and get started. Thank you, Board Members.
Let me stop the meeting. Stop the meeting. Oh. Stop the meeting. Yes. The following comments are non-related comments from the May seventeenth Board Study Session. The first comment received was from Yvonne. Why does the board think this is necessary? As parents, we should also decide what should be taught in our kids' schools. Are teachers okay with this regulation? Do you think they will feel comfortable? How does this benefit our children? It's only going to cause them confusion. Our children should not be taught this in school. If we can't teach about God in schools, then why is this okay? It is our job as parents to teach our children about this subject. We cannot allow this. I hope you reconsider this. If this is going to be part of PUSD schools, I will have to move my children to a better district with morals and who values parents' input. Because at the end, at the end, we, the people, decide, not the ones who hold the title. And whoever is afraid to speak up, it's never too late to speak up. Let's keep our children innocent as long as we can. And the next comment was received by Anonymous. To the President of the, of the board, this is the most disturbing thing you can do to our children. In what mind do you think this is okay? I send my kids to school to be taught things they actually should learn about, know this perverse nonsense. This is not essential for their education. How is it possible that people that don't have kids decide our children's education? Sick. Schools should be teaching basic life skills and self-defense, things that are actually important to be successful in life. Shame on you. And the next comment was received, Anonymous. Good evening. I'm a parent of two students that attend Paramount Unified. I'm appalled that Ms. Cuarenta posted on Facebook that she went to advocate for the removal of the last police officer left on Paramount High School campus last Friday at Paramount Substation. Who do you think you are, Ms. Cuarenta? You are not the acting superintendent to do this. The police officer needs to remain on the campus. The students need protection. Haven't you heard what goes on on campus in the past? I had the choice to send my daughters to a private school. But I chose Paramount because I thought that they would have the best interest for my daughters. But it doesn't seem that that is true. If the police officer is removed, I will remove my daughters from Paramount Unified and place them in a school district where their life is valued. You, Ms. Cuarenta, De Leon, and Gomez, are a disgrace to the community of Paramount. The three of you are toxic, and I can't wait until we can rally up and have you three replaced with individuals who truly have the best interests for all stakeholders at Paramount Unified. And the next comment was received, Anonymous. Good evening, Board Members and Interim Superintendent Frutos. As a teacher in the district, I am excited to see the strong amount of funding provided for schools for reopening and to address loss of learning. I ask that you please show your support and respect for the teachers by supporting a rate for summer school that our hard-working teachers deserve. This is a great opportunity to demonstrate appreciation to the teachers who are stepping up to help our students in a year when teachers aren't feeling much appreciation or gratification despite their Herculean effort to keep students engaged and learning. Many of my peers are turning to other districts who are showing more love for their teachers and staff. Please do the right thing by showing the most essential cog in the educational machine that they are valued. And the next comment was received, Anonymous. This is a response to Board Member Cuarenta's comment about the city of Paramount's lack of transparency about the AQMD. The city has addressed the status of the air quality and the reasons why the AQMD pulled out of monitoring the monitors in our city. They have also addressed in the last council meetings how their air quality will be monitored. Stop making negative comments about the city and listen to the meetings instead. This is in response to the Board Member De Leon's comment about who should be teaching our students. Board Member De Leon, you stated that data backs up the theory that our most, mostly Hispanic student population should be taught by bilingual teachers. Your data did not state what districts in our nation have teachers that match their students' ethnic backgrounds. Our district is inclusive to all ethnic backgrounds in our teaching staff. You failed to mention how our graduation rates have improved throughout the years and how more students from our high school have been accepted into major universities in our country. This is a testimony to exemplar teaching practices of our district staff. An instructor should be considered successful because of their practices, not the color of their skin. You cannot fight racism with racism. Racism is not the Paramount way. And the next comment was received by Angel Joy. Good evening, Board Members and PUSD Leadership. In the past few weeks, I have been attending school board meetings with the recent exit of our superintendent and now another senior campus principal. I have been curious to see what the direction our district would be going. I have been quite alarmed to all the comments during these meetings. I have attended many meetings as a longtime teacher, but I have never heard such discontent from staff and community members. Our district has weathered many storms and worked together in the best interests of students and families. Our district is not immune to issues. We mirror the world of education. But Paramount Unified has always stayed above the line until now. Last week's meeting was unsettling. For members of our community to be speaking out anonymously and in such large number was alarming and displays a lack of trust in its leadership. Yet, I was more alarmed that the anonymity, anonymity of the comments were highlighted, not the actual concerns. After attending the meeting last week and then called into an unplanned staff meeting two days later, I was once again concerned. Comments that were dismissed two days earlier seemed to be more important than given credit. Senior Campus was now getting yet another principal. Why were we led to believe that we shouldn't be listening to anonymous comments? Yet, Dr. Frutos was now making a major change on the heels of those comments. During the board meetings, many comments were made about Dr. Frutos. In his tenure with Paramount Unified, last Wednesday was the very first time I had ever seen Dr. Frutos. He has never actively attended our school events. He has never stood side-by-side us while educating our students, even during the many changes in site leadership. Even in a pandemic where we have been online for over a year, he has never surfaced. I find it ironic that a want for a promotion warrants his presence. We are thrilled to be receiving Ms. Alcedo as our principal. Her reputation precedes her, and we are looking forward to her strong PUSD leadership. However, a statement was made that an announcement would be made to the entire organization. Where is this statement? Was the decision a reaction to Monday's meeting? Will this be recalled as the other one was? We were called into a meeting quickly, yet the, the entire organization has yet to be informed. We want our students and staff to be thoughtful and thorough, yet our leadership is not, which leads me to believe the comments made at the May tenth meeting have validity, and those submitting comments are providing insight on Dr. Frutos and the board's lack of leadership. And the next comment was received, Anonymous. Good evening, Board President Cuarenta and Board Members. As a teacher in PUSD, I wanted to follow up regarding the additional funding that school districts in California are receiving. Mr. Frutos gave a vague response to this last week, but we haven't heard any further information. Surrounding districts have received surveys or have already started hearing about all of the much-needed resources and personnel being added as we begin to transition back from our students being more, being home for over a year. Will our community be receiving a survey? Will we begin to see where the funds will be used to support our children and our staff as we transition back? The community and staff, but most importantly, the students, need additional support. Teachers have been working on overdrive for the past fourteen months, and we are looking forward to getting back into the classroom. However, we recognize that many of our students are going to need way more support than can be provided in a classroom of thirty students and one teacher. Let's start being transparent about how we are going to get our students this critical support with the millions of funding that we are receiving. Thank you. And the next comment was received, Anonymous. Good evening, School Board Members. I was extremely disappointed last week to find that when I tried to submit a comment regarding an item on the agenda, I could not. The link had been closed, and it was only ten forty-five A M. I also had a friend who, between her and her husband, were only able to submit one comment. This makes it seem like, for one, for some reason, you are limiting community input. I am invested in my child's education and this, this district, and this district has always been supportive of community input. I hope that this is not going to continue in upcoming meetings, as I am in agreement that we need more transparency in this district. Please continue to keep our community involved and ensure that our voices are heard. Thank you for your time. And the next comment was received by April O'Connor. Good evening, School Board President Cuarenta,